Thursday, May 17, 2016, roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Bickevich.
Here.
Gray-Halen.
Here.
Thoman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the approval of the amendments of May 3, 2016.
Bickevich will make a motion to approve the amendments of May 3, 2016, as written. Guzekowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bickevich.
Aye.
Gray-Halen.
Aye.
Thoman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Under new business, item four is a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment as follows. Board of review, a five-year term to expire May of 2021, to Stephen M. Traskin, 1409 West Armond Way. There's no questions, just need a motion on that?
Gale moves to concur with the mayor's appointment as listed.
Guzekowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gray-Halen.
Aye.
Thoman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bickevich.
Aye.
Item five is a discussion of ordinance number 2804, concurring with the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, amending section two of ordinance number 2788, fixing the salary ranges, salary wages, and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2016, and adding the position of accounting associate in the Finance Department. Jerry?
So this is a recommendation that's coming to the council from the Personnel Committee, which vetted the request of the Finance Director to add a full-time position to the department. That's the position of Accounting Associate. Salary range for that is $38,000 to $45,000. Basically, the workload in the Finance Department has become such that it is nearly impossible to keep up with the workload, and particularly some of the reporting that needs to be done in the department. This is not necessarily a new issue, I think, in the background of both the Personnel Committee and the council. We'll see that this request has been out there since 2012, or at least on my identification, that there was a need for additional assistance in the department to keep up with some of the complexities that we're dealing with, and some of the TIF districts, and the bond issues that we have, as well as the sheer volume of work that's out there. From my position, I wanted to take a look at and see what kind of efficiencies we were able to garner from the BSNA system. The council will remember, we put $400,000 into a new software system that we expected was going to get some efficiencies in it. We've looked at processes. We also had, at that time, a relatively new Finance Director, and I thought it would be prudent to make sure that Bridget had some time in the position before we would make such a move. As it's turned out, I believe, in terms of evaluating the activity of the department and the effort that the department's made, that we are just not going to be able to keep up with workload in the department in the way that it needs to. So that recommendation was brought to the Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee reviewed it in a fair amount of detail, and makes a recommendation to the council to add that position. I would indicate, as well, that this would have no adverse impact on the budget. I won't say it won't have any impact, because there's clearly an extra cost. But that cost would be paid for, in this position, from the administrative fees that we generate from the various TIF districts that we already have and that we are creating. That, quite honestly, is where much of the workload in the department is coming from, so it's appropriate that that helps pay for the system, or for the position. So no negative impacts on the city's budget from that. This position can be paid for out of the revenues that are being generated from those districts. So that's the background. More detailed information would be available from Bridget. The council will also note, in the last acorn, my article focused a little bit on some of the capacity challenges that we're having. As a staff, this is one of those areas that I believe our capacity is being challenged and has been exceeded, and I think that the council will see this, to some extent, in other areas in the organization as well.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm gonna open up for questions and comments. I also have a citizen request to comment.
I have a question.
Alderman Kurkowski?
Jerry, I understand that this individual would be a city employee and would be funded by the TIF districts. Now humor me for just a brief moment. I understand that when these various TIF districts expire, probably none of us will be around at that time, because it takes a long time for those to expire. So the person in that position may or may not be the same one, but say, for example, all of the TIF districts expire, they all get closed out, and we have this individual. Would that then, the cost of that employee be placed upon the city then, because the TIF districts no longer exist? And I think I may have one more question. But go ahead with it.
The answer would be no. When the district closes, then typically what the city is doing is it's taking the incremental value from that district. It's normally paying for the bonds and these administrative costs. When that district ends, those dollars then that get generated by the city are freed up, and so they no longer are being funneled, if you will, to that infrastructure, to those administrative fees. So those dollars would be available at approximately, well, at 50% of the tax levy that would come into the general fund, that doesn't now. So the taxpayers, the city, would not be left in the lurch at that point and have an expenditure that wouldn't have an offsetting revenue. So rather than the increment, it would be the property tax revenue into the general fund that would then be available.
Okay. And then if the one individual remains on the payroll, being funded by these TIF districts to a point where they're eligible to retire, and there's no longer any TIF districts, is there a financial impact on the city for this retiree, because he's now retired and he's no longer a part of these TIF districts?
No. Wisconsin's WRS, the Wisconsin Retirement System, is probably the best-funded system in the country, and so the retirement costs are fully funded during the lifetime of an employee while they're here. There's no unfunded liability. Wisconsin's, the way it's operating right now, is fully funded. Illinois just wishes it was like us.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Just a statement, I think.
Alderman Gale?
Jerry, I think, and Bridget have laid it out well. This is a, even though the city has kind of enjoyed a relatively flattish employment picture for the past few years, even though we've continued to have a lot of economic development activity, this is one of the results of some of that activity, where our professional staff has become stretched overly thin on some of our most sensitive and necessary functions. So I think this is a necessary add, it's been well justified, and economically we can cover the cost. So I think it's a necessary and appropriate appointment, and I support it.
I concur with the common council president. To think that we've accomplished what we've accomplished with a stable staff status quo is pretty remarkable, and shows the kind of workmanship and the quality of work that's being done at Oak Creek, so we're very proud of the current staff. Other questions? Alderman Bickevich?
Just kind of a question. This position in accounting doesn't require an accounting degree, just a GED, high school degree, for $38,000 to $40,000 a year?
Correct. The way that we're structuring this position is that this position will be in charge of the act of processing payroll, which is through our new financial software. It will be overseen by our current payroll coordinator. So we have two positions at this time, in addition to myself, that have four-year accounting degrees. So this is essentially the beginning level part of that function within the department. So it's a trained position. It's a position that we will train, that we will work through that process, and that we will anticipate any potential turnover.
Will this person do anything else, like currently 40% of your time is journal entries, reporting bank accounts, account analysis, special assessments? Will they handle any of that?
They will handle. The key for this position is the process of payroll, which will take up at least 40 hours in the two-week time period, just because we process payroll every other week. So 40 hours will be processing payroll. In the off-schedules, they will also process accounts payable, which will free up some time of our current staff accountant to deal with more of the journal entries and the detailed tasks that are in my plate currently. And that position will also be able to expand into miscellaneous receivables, so some of our MR parts as well.
Yeah, I would, I, hopefully somebody with an associate's in accounting comes out. I'd like to see that. Yeah.
All right, I have a resident comment, Sig Tomkowsky. Welcome.
Sure. Opportunity to review the information that's been submitted with the agenda items. Very thorough, and it provides a strong rationale for support of the amendment. I haven't talked to Jerry or Bridget about my comments tonight. I also reflected back when May of 11, I started to get involved a little bit, as a resident and a citizen, on finance issues, and joined the Finance Committee back then. Some of the comments that were made in those reports were made back then, too. So this has a brief history, not brief, but a long history. I've also had the opportunity, when Bridget was being considered for the position, to look at her background in Burlington and Brown Deer. She developed a lot of policies that were necessary, which many municipalities should attend to, and she also had a program called Fiscal Management Contingency Planning, and I thought that was pretty cool. That was pretty progressive, as well as working on fiscal reporting and earning a lot of credits for that kind of work. So she's got a strong background. What I see here is a situation in which the leader for the fiscal function in this city needs to have staff resources, which you're aware of now, for the routine processes that occur in the department, but also to devote her time or his time to attend to the use of her experience and challenges to move ahead and go through continuous improvement. In addition, I hear an awful lot of organizations are focusing on collaboration and coordination. That's the job of a leader. So I thought about this a little bit more, and I said the cost of this position and the attention by Bridget on important work will have a payback. It's not going to be a net zero effect. So there'll be, this will be offset by that kind of initiative. On a $23 million budget, this position costs about 2/10ths of a percent. The bottom line that I came to is that, in Oak Creek in particular, it's very important, with all of the progressive changes occurring, to have a focus on financing the future, not just the next fiscal period. So that was just my analysis, and I thank you very much for letting me share my thoughts this evening.
Thanks for your comments, appreciate it. Alderman Thoman?
Difference between the pay range and the actual fiscal impact, Bridget is with the benefits involved. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion?
Thoman will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2804, concurring with the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, amending section two of ordinance number 2788, fixing the salary ranges, salary wages, and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2016, adding the position of Accounting Associate in the Finance Department.
Bickevich will second. Roll call.
Alderman Thoman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bickevich.
Aye.
Gray-Halen.
Item six is a motion to concur with the Personnel Committee's executive search firm recommendation to assist in the hiring of the next city administrator. HR directors here to speak to that issue?
Yes, thank you. Becky Shermer, HR manager. We just heard presentations from Waters &amp; Company, a Springstead company, Renee Narlock &amp; Associates, and GovHRUSA.com. The recommendation from the Personnel Committee was to recommend GovHRUSA.com. They have the most local recruitments, and they would have the most knowledge of candidates within the state of Wisconsin and within the Milwaukee metropolitan area. However, we did want to bring to your attention that there was, there is a pending lawsuit with them right now. So just to be transparent, that that is in the media. It was an issue with the city of Beloit on a hiring. They made an offer to the wrong candidate.
Anything else? Okay. So the Personnel Committee reviewed the three candidates and had Skype interviews with all three? Yes?
Yes.
Comments from the chair of the Personnel Committee?
This was a tough one, because I think staff did a good job narrowing it down to three. All three were definitely qualified. The decision, because this decision is so tough, the methods used by these companies, all three, are somewhat similar, so it's kind of hard to pick and choose. But two, Personnel Committee felt that the last two that were interviewed, Renee Narlock and Lee from Gov were the best two, and the latter is the one that went out with Personnel Committee.
Was that decision unanimous?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Questions from the council or comments? Start on the end. Alderman Kurkowski?
I guess the lawsuit, where is it? What stage of it is it in, and what's the pending ramifications if they lose?
Those are good questions. I do not know the answers to those. I could research that, though, and get back to you.
From your understanding, it was because they notified the wrong candidate?
Correct.
Okay.
And our labor attorney is working on the case as well.
When did that happen?
Um, it was just a few months ago, from what I recall.
City of Beloit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Bickevich?
Being part of Personnel and helping make this decision, we looked at a number of factors, and one thing that really played out is exactly where the city is, development-wise, financially, growth-wise, and we felt that the candidate we chose had the best connections within Wisconsin to keep us moving forward. We really feel we're going to need a seasoned candidate to step up and take Jerry Peterson's place going forward, somebody that's going to be able to not just kind of get a feel for Wisconsin, but know Wisconsin, know its politics from local to state. We did talk extensively about the pending lawsuit or the litigation that's going on. It's our understanding it was a miscommunication in electronic email type thing, and they're sorting out actually on whose end it happened on, whether it was the recruiter or the city itself. But somewhere along the line, a mistake was made, but we feel pretty confident that they learned their lesson, and we won't be a victim of that.
Gray-Halen?
Just a question for anybody on Personnel who maybe care to answer it. In the big picture, in the overview of what we're looking for, I kind of thought, just in passing, that maybe it would have been more beneficial to have a wider range of candidates from all different areas, as well as Wisconsin, because in the end, you know, when the final candidates come up before the board here for the actual decision, I mean, a lot of things play into that, and I don't know if just limiting our search to people from Wisconsin isn't going to, you know, really fulfill the actual thing that we're looking for. But I kind of thought it would be better to have a wider range of candidates from a larger area, you know?
I guess I can take it. I don't disagree with you. We did discuss that a little bit. And again, the talent pool's going to be what the talent pool is. They're going to advertise basically in the same periodicals and the whole thing where they do their recruitment from, both statewide and outside the state. But also, their range of contacts within the state, we felt, was an advantage, and neighboring states. So they're not limited to Wisconsin, but some of the other companies hailed out of Florida, Texas, and most of their recruitment recommendations came out of those states, obviously, because they're familiar with it. So it looked like a trend there, and of course, this person had a stronger background within the Midwest. I personally felt we'll get candidates from all over. The candidate pool's going to be what the candidate pool is. I think the difference comes in where this person understands Wisconsin, and particularly southeastern Wisconsin, where we reside, that'll help us make the best choice.
For Alderman Gray-Halen's benefit, he didn't get a chance to hear that, but recruiters did indicate they believe Oak Creek and our current situation, our current dynamic, will be very attractive in terms of soliciting response from folks from all walks of the country. So not only just Wisconsin, I mean, we, you know, and that'll be part of your process when they actually come and interview council members, mayor, interested parties, in terms of what we actually want to see in our city administrator. You're going to be able to have that input, that you can add that to the fire, that you don't necessarily want to have Wisconsin recruits, you want to be able to look at talent pool from across the country. But they did, across the board, say, "The Oak Creek recruitment will be a very attractive position, and we should see a fairly strong response to our ad." In terms of the lawsuit, just doing quick math, Lee from GovHR did include a list of his firm's placements in the past while, and from my rough calculation, there's 300 placements on this brochure he included. So, I mean, governments, entities get sued regularly for things that go haywire. If that's an indication of he found one, I think it comes with the territory and costs of doing business sometimes.
The recommended company is the same company that hired three positions in Franklin, correct?
I did contact Mayor Olson, and he highly recommended this individual, found them to be very resourceful and very useful.
That was the utility director, economic development director?
Public Works.
IT.
IT. Recent, recent?
Very recent, yeah.
Okay. And then just for history's sake, Renee Narlock is the company we used last time, correct?
Correct.
For Jerry's hire. Right, okay. Okay, other questions? Go ahead, Alderman Guzekowski?
I guess my only question would be, Melissa, with the lawsuit, is there anything that concerns you? I don't know if you've had any time to hear about any of this, but just any concerns with you?
I mean, this is the first time hearing of it, but I know that Personnel's comments, and certainly fulfilling their duties, and certainly with their HR manager, for their comfort level, and I think that a comment was made just a bit ago, that's part of the landscape, and we certainly don't have control over how that litigation will settle, but I think that, standing on its own here, we're looking at, all told, the best search firm. I think that it'll run independently of that.
Alderman Gale, then Alderman Thoman?
The one thing, sorry, with this firm, Lee did indicate his timeframe is well within our comfort zone in terms of the timeframe. We were looking to have a person in the seat in terms of this role. We're looking for mid-September, his timeframe definitely meets that.
What about the other candidate?
Renee's was, she said she could accommodate, but hers is definitely a 14 to 16-week search period, which is getting us right to our lack of comfort in terms of overlap.
Alderman Thoman? This side? Anything else? So the recommendation is to go with the HR Gov, is that the name of the company, or the search firm? So we need a motion to support that.
Thoman will make a motion to concur with the Personnel Committee's executive search firm recommendation, GovHRUSA, to assist in the hiring of the next city administrator.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bickevich.
Aye.
Gray-Halen.
Aye.
Thoman.
Aye.
Item seven is a motion to concur with the Personnel Committee's recommendation regarding the revised supplemental merit compensation award administrative policy. Becky?
Requesting that this item be tabled, as we did not have a chance to discuss this at Personnel this evening.
All right, we'll table that, hold it to the next meeting. Item eight is a consideration of resolution number 11709-051716, approving the contract between the city of Oak Creek and the Milwaukee Area Domestic Control Commission, MADDAC, proposed by Committee of the Whole. City Administrator?
The only comment I had on this, I think you got Exhibit C provided to you that's revised. I can only identify two items that were changed from what has historically been. The services provided by MADDAC, that's the firm that deals basically on a countywide basis with animal control. It's a very efficient operation. And the changes from the previous duties that they performed, two are eliminated, and I'll read those for you. It was previously 3-1-sub-3, which was establish holding criterion for society's groups and conduct quarterly facilities inspections. That is out. And the second issue that's out is under item B, related to operating conditions, and it's hold dogs and cats for seven days. That's out of the agreement.
Do you know what their new policy is, Jerry?
I do not.
I believe it's just a shorter timeframe.
Yeah.
I believe it is, too, but I don't know what that timeframe is. I believe that that's a cost issue for the agency. It's not saying that they automatically would euthanize, for instance, a dog or cat before that. It's a matter of funding, I think, in the long-term basis.
And that was the director of MADDAC, Karen Sparapani, last week. We talked about that issue. It's both cost and space. I mean, there's tremendous, they're dealing with tremendous number of pit bulls, because it's taking more and more space, hard to have people adopt, for some reason, probably the obvious reason.
I think they wanted that flexibility based on those two issues, rather than to say that they will maintain at least that time.
Yeah, tremendous organization, they do a lot of hard work, great staff. Matter of fact, we're going to tour the facility next month, so I would recommend that we, you know, go forward on it. They do a lot of great work.
Eric, what does she have to say about the holding period?
I can't remember us specifically talking about that. I know it's shorter, but I'm thinking five days, but that would be a guess.
Are they breed-specific, or?
Again, it's.
Subjective?
No, it's not one breed identified. It's just the large volume of pit bulls is one of the reasons why they have space problems.
Yes, the council might understand this is a really sensitive issue for dog owners, primarily mayors and others that are sitting on this advisory board. They vetted that out, and I'm sure that's a need of the organization based on its finances. But you can imagine that was probably a fair amount of discussion over that issue.
Every month, we have an updated ICC, Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee, or Council, on this issue. It's contentious, you know, people never want to see dogs destroyed. There's some people that believe in no-kill policies. It's not realistic, in my opinion, but they do a tremendous job there, and they try to save every animal and get them adopted. And we had a discussion tonight with a resident who's actively involved with trying to get an additional dog, so it's something that people care about, and we're going to, we'll be talking about it in future meetings, about our policies related to animals and people's care. So it's an important organization, I think we need to support that.
If I would.
Alderman Gale?
Not to be pessimist, but do we have a feel for how many interactions the city of Oak Creek has with this organization?
Many. So it's both with wild stray animals that aren't dogs and pets. It's dogs and pets, but I cannot tell you the number. It's a fairly, I think we've got about a $50,000 budget annually for that, which is, I think, reasonable, given what it would cost us to do this on our own, as well as the support facility. So I think that, again, is part of the efficiency for the multi-jurisdiction operation here.
Yeah, one quick thing before I'll hand over to the city clerk. So one of the things I took away from the conversation is that the single most important thing you can do for your dog or cat is to put a identifying tag on them with your current contact information. Make sure you're updated if it changes, phone numbers change, address changes, obviously. Having a license, going to City Hall and getting a license, which we encourage, isn't the only thing you should do. Put a personal ID tag on your dog, including name, if possible. That makes the process a lot easier for the people that find your dog. You can often take MADDAC out of the equation, because the people then can contact you directly and get your dog back, or cat back.
And the young folks go farther than that. They put chips in the animals as well.
Yes, so there's lots of technology involved. City Clerk?
And just relating to the fiscal question, in researching this agreement, I went back to 1998 and beyond, and before, and I have to say that there's been very little changes in the service, as the city administrator pointed out. And we had been budgeting $60,000, so our cost for this service has actually gone down. So that is really something to note.
Good point. Thank you. Any other questions? Motion?
Gelski will make a motion to approve resolution number 11709-051716, approving the contract between the city of Oak Creek and the Milwaukee Area Domestic Control Commission.
Bickevich will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Bickevich.
Aye.
Gray-Halen.
Aye.
Thoman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item nine is a consideration of ordinance number 2805. It would repeal and recreate section 2.05 of the municipal code, changing the polling place locations for the city of Oak Creek.
Catherine, do you want to take that, or you want me to?
I certainly can.
City Clerk?
So the April primary turned out to be a very high turnout for the city of Oak Creek. Post that election, the mayor, the superintendent, and myself heard from many, many residents concerning security in the polling locations, especially in our schools. The mayor and the superintendent and I met, and we went over some options, and we considered what we can do to relieve those concerns. In the instance of Deerfield Elementary, the school is a very, very difficult location to secure during elections. That district has increased its registered voters. We are up to a little bit more. the superintendent and I met and we went over some options and we considered what we can do to relieve those concerns. In the instance of Deerfield Elementary, the school is a very, very difficult location to secure during elections. That district has increased its registered voters. We are up to a little bit over 3,800 voters in that district. So, their parking is extremely limited. In 2012, I had moved them from a different location for accessibility reasons, knowing that this Deerfield School in our school district is our accessible school. It accommodates almost 100 accessible students on a daily basis. So, it really did meet all the standards. It exceeded the standards for the Government and Accountability Board to function as a polling location. At this point in time, with so many concerns, the mayor and superintendent decided that this location would be best served at a different city building. So, knowing our options were limited, we really chose to move it here to City Hall, acknowledging that this would be outside of that district's physical boundaries. That is not a requirement by state statute. The statute does suggest that as much as possible to use civic buildings for public polling locations. So, at this time, you know, we will be looking at Oak Creek East Middle School and Oak Creek West Middle School. And this is a very, very busy election year. We have two more elections, one in August when the school is not in session, and then, of course, the November election that is anticipated to be an extremely high turnout. That's probably close to 90% for the City of Oak Creek. So, knowing that the school district has also already created their calendar, the school calendar, it was difficult for them to say that this could just be an in-service day for this election. And we really thought at this time, the best thing to do was to move this polling location from Deerfield to City Hall.
And the superintendent also indicated in that meeting that the middle school locations were secure, even though there were people coming into school because of how they configured the polling place, so.
Correct. And I met with the superintendent and the principal at Oak Creek East Middle School on Monday afternoon and we did a walk-through. But there are some additional measures that we can put in place to secure that polling location, to restrict voters to only the gymnasium by switching the doors that they enter. We'd already done that at West Middle School. So, we will continue to monitor that situation, and I've asked the superintendent to please bring that to the school board and let them please have that discussion, and that they are aware of the residents' concerns about having the polling locations in the schools. So, I anticipate that he will be doing that.
Questions? Alderman Toman.
This is my district, and I understand the concerns here. You're dealing with an elementary school that, you know, you've got security issues, but I don't like it. I mean, you're shipping, District Four is quite a ways from the proposed polling place, so I can't support it. I understand the issues involved. It's complicated. Not a criticism of the city clerk or anything, but there's got to be a better solution than to have my constituents, you know, to, actually, you're talking about a November election. That could really impact the voter turnout. Has, have any other located, let me ask you a question about the East Middle School. Is that whole gymnasium shut down for the voting?
It is. And one of the concerns of the residents, and I hear this quite frequently, I hear both sides, is the parents really like that the students are engaged in the voting process and that they're able to witness the voting process. And I think that years ago, that was probably the case. Now, you know, if you spend a day, an election day, with a student, what they see is that they cannot go outside for recess. In many situations, they can't have lunch in the cafeteria. They have to have it at their desks. They do not have gym classes, and the buses' schedule is severely altered by all the voter traffic.
So, the whole gym is shut down?
So, the whole gym is shut down on that day.
Is there a possibility that gym could be split to accommodate two different districts?
At?
Given the size of that gym?
At East Middle School?
Yes.
It wouldn't be the size of the room that would be an issue. It would actually be the traffic and the parking. We considered, so, part of your question was also, was there other locations considered? In District Four, in the physical boundaries, we have two other schools. We have Grace Lutheran. They both have students. We have St. Matthews. They also have students. Power plant was suggested. Obviously, we cannot have a polling location there. And a private business was suggested that has a banquet room. The reason why the banquet room wasn't considered is that their parking is extremely limited, and for accessibility issues, they didn't meet the requirements. And we're also relying on a business that may change over to become a different business or may close altogether. We have no guarantee on that. So, it's a risky, it's a risky evaluation. There was also, District Five is a little bit closer in distance than City Hall, two District, four District Four residents. Same situation there, even though it's a very large room that has a high capacity. Even on a 67% turnout, we have lines that can fill that entire room for just one district. I think splitting another district and combining would be very difficult to ensure that everything is proper that day as far as it's concerned.
And under current, we have a district that travels outside of the district to vote, right?
Correct, District, the Community Center.
So, this is unprecedented. I mean, we already have that. And the issue with Deerfield is also traffic. I mean, that neighborhood is just impossible to navigate for voting or students or parents. That's one of the issues.
Actually, when it was switched from Carrollton to Deerfield, if you remember, the school district was examining the land that they owned to the east of the school, was at one time supposed to be paved, and they talked about paving that for extra parking. So, that would solve one of the issues. It doesn't solve the security part, but it would solve the parking issue. You're right, that parking lot's a nightmare. That's bad.
These aren't easy issues. Cities all around the state are dealing with this. We're trying to balance all of it.
How about the Legion? Was that looked at? Because that room that they have in the back there would accommodate, and there's parking there.
Or the Lower Legion?
And the Lower Legion, and so, I have to say that this, that this topic is very escalated right now for all municipalities that have polling locations in schools. I'm keeping the Legion in my back pocket for Oak Creek East Middle School, not for Deerfield or for District Four, because that would be the common sense place to move Oak Creek East Middle School, should the schools decide that they, you know, would prefer that we weren't there, or should common council decide that we need to move out of the schools. Oak Creek East Middle School would move right across the street to the Legion. That would be my hope. So, if I were to move Deerfield to the Lower Legion right now, I would, I would fear that I would need to change them again. We, by state statute, we need to provide a 30-day notice to all the voters registered in that district. So, we will send out two rounds of postcards to every registered voter in District Four, one prior to the August election and then one prior to the November election, and obviously do our due diligence in, you know, doing press releases and social media, however we can get that word out. And, you know, August will be a much smaller turnout. It will have a lot of, it'll go very far in getting a portion of the voters to know where their new location is. I'm also intent on doing a voter registration drive here at City Hall during the summer, and then be very clear on their options. Should they not want to travel on Election Day to City Hall, they could do early voting as well as absentee voting. I'll be very clear on instructions on how they can do that. There's not an ideal or a perfect answer to this.
Could do upper and lower Legion. I'd like to see it switched to the Legion right now. That's just my opinion.
We also don't know what the Legion, how the Legion feels about that.
Well, Legion has been pretty accommodating in the past.
Mr. Degen, you had a comment request for him? Then I'll jump over here.
South Pennsylvania. I've been involved in the election process for a number of years. In fact, when I first was involved with Goldwater Campaign, I was surprised. The fourth district was split. They had two voting places. One at the Express, right on 50th Avenue, the Express Office, also handled dry cleaning, and the Ochsens School. And I enjoyed even stopping at the Ochsens School because my wife was teaching there, and the old furnace and the Irishman that kept it up. But my point is that there are a number of solutions that I'm surprised we aren't in the middle of it now, because the state law requires, as soon as a population goes above 30,000, 35,000, that you have to have separate polling places for every ward, even in the automatic district. Now, it's surprising what some communities do. Just go into Milwaukee, and I think it was Reagan High School, it must have been another high school, three different polling places in the one school building because it was available. Now, Cudahy has their polling places for years in the fire station. So, if, if the elementary school's not available, and if the fire station is not large enough, perhaps we could use the marketplace and split that in sections so that, and we know why. The polling places were set up that way on 5th Avenue, because that's where the minorities worked in that area and lived in that area, and they all didn't have expensive cars. This arrangement to have to travel over here, just, I agree with Alderman Toman, it's completely against making voting available and always forcing people to have, I won't go into that, but as far as I'm concerned, we've got, we've got to use, if we can't use the elementary schools, we'll have to use our fire stations, just like Cudahy does. So, be with it, because in four years, you're going to have to do it.
Thanks for your comments. Alderman Kirkowski.
I have to agree with Alderman Toman. I was going to suggest the Legion Hall. I mean, it's right across the street from the East Middle School, which you were talking about. And don't get me wrong, I'm, but I, it kind of lost me with the fact that the schoolchildren would lose one day of gym classes and then would have to eat lunch in their classroom. I mean, we are talking about voting. I think that's quite important. Everybody's going to be inconvenienced to some extent, but I think having to have residents come over here to the Civic Center, I know, except for the evening hours, I think parking here could be a challenge also. So, I would support the Legion. I would not support Civic Center.
Okay, so, just so we're clear, the Legion is, would also be a temporary solution, because we would not be able to have two polling places in that same location. The other thing is, we've never had a conversation with the Legion. We're volunteering a site based on hearsay, and they may be willing to do it. We don't know that. So, you can't take action on a site without having a conversation with the group.
You're assuming the middle school's going to kick us out, and that's not a given either, so.
Well, they should.
Well.
And no, I'm not, I'm not assuming that they'll remove us. I suppose I'm very anxious for the school board to be aware of the residents' concerns. I have many PTOs who have contacted me, just an entire folder of comments, and I know that other school districts have taken action. And should they choose to do that, I would be faced to change two locations then for spring elections, and possibly potentially three with the West Middle School. You know, I know that the school district, to be quite honest, is a great community partner. That is always their goal. They strive to be that, and I appreciate that. I think we all do. We work very closely with them, and I believe that they want to stay as a community partner and keep them in the schools. However, in today's world, we need to face the reality that our safety and security of our children come first. And I think that any, any parent or resident, when presented with all of the possible or potential issues that may arise on an Election Day, would have a hard time not being supportive of moving them from the school. And this is a shared concern that I've heard. So, I suppose, I'm not opposed to the Legion at all. I certainly could approach them and ask them for this election. I do not want to frustrate the residents of District Four further by saying, we'll move you to the Legion, should the Legion be available, and then have the school board meet and discuss or the issue to continue, and then say, guess what, District Four, now you're going to come to City Hall. We're going to move East Middle School to the Legion because it makes sense. It's within their district. It's right across. It's very unfortunate. I have put contests out there to my poll workers to find me a location, a physical location in District Four. It just, it just, today does not exist.
So, it's an extremely touchy issue. The comments on this roll downhill. So, they come to me, they come to Catherine, they come to the, to the superintendent. So, very contentious. People are looking to us to take leadership on this. I would suggest we have some time. We could hold it to the next meeting.
Certainly.
Let's have a conversation with other entities that might work and see what we can come up with.
Catherine, when you say two separate polling places, so dividing a gym doesn't work, correct?
It's not that it doesn't work, and what, the information that Arden provided is, for the most part, correct. When our census comes out in 2020, once a city's population is above, certified above 35,000, it's not that we need to have a separate location for each ward. We need to report separately by ward, which adds to the confusion in a polling place, but other municipalities do it. It's quite a bit of work and it's much more costly. So, we would be required to do that. So, we could divide a location into two polling locations. The problem with that is, I don't want to frustrate the voters. I certainly do not want to inhibit any part of the voting process. When they get to a location, and it's a 90% turnout election, and there's over four, over 8,000 voters registered there and with election day registration, we do not have a facility, not one of my locations could accommodate two, two districts in one location. As much as I would like to say that that could happen, realistically, it really could not, between parking, traffic, and just the logistics of the buildings, I, it's very unfortunate.
So, technically, upper and lower Legion would be legal, in your opinion?
Oh, we certainly could, we could do that.
Two separate buildings.
Two separate buildings?
Yeah.
Oh, and we could combine it into one if we, if we needed to. I mean, we could do them both in Lower Legion. It's not, that technical part of it is fine. It's the logistics part, whether or not that would be the best thing for the voters to make it possible.
All right, my recommendation is to hold. Anyone have any questions on, comments on that? Alderman Bakavich?
Just one comment. Going forward and searching for sites, I suggest you contact the police department and the armory.
And the armory? The one on, off of Hull?
On Hull. I mean, they do have a rather large open area. Maybe they'd be accommodating. Just an idea.
Thank you.
If you have other ideas, submit them to the clerk and we'll investigate them between now and the next meeting. Item nine is held. Item 10 is a motion to designate the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Oak Creek Now, to serve as the official city newspaper for the next 12 months. Anybody want to comment on it?
Mike?
Annual.
I'm done.
All right. Somebody make a motions.
Chris to beat me to it. It's her, it's her dollar amount. She got it.
Bakavich will make a motion to designate the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel and Oak Creek Now to serve as the official city newspaper for the next 12 months.
Gill, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bakavich?
Aye.
Forhalen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gill?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
Another annual motion. Item 11 is a motion to concur with the Celebrations Commission and designate Monday, October 31st, 2016, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM as the official City of Oak Creek trick or treat. Anybody want to weigh in on that one?
Alderman Bakavich? Just to let people know, that is a Monday. It is officially holiday.
I emphasize the Monday.
And it will be Monday, just so everybody's aware. And if you're going to complain, direct your complaints to Mayor Stephen Scafidi.
That's totally uncalled for. Bring it on.
You got a phone number, Dan?
Well, the neighborhoods that want to enjoy their weekend, get togethers, they can do it themselves.
The public actually asked Celebrations to do it on a traditional holiday. I don't know if it's a holiday, traditional Halloween day.
We'll see how it goes. Any, anybody else? Motion.
Bakavich will make a motion to concur with the Celebrations Commission and designate Monday, October 31st, 2016, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, the official City of Oak Creek trick
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Item twelve is a motion to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of five hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Finance Director is here to answer any of your questions. And you have a comment? Okay, go ahead.
Item number four, you see a payment to BSNA Software. This is our last full-blown module that we are getting ready to release. So it's been installed. Training has been going on with Ted from DPW for the last week. And I believe we are set to bring this to Common Council in July so that you can do it and see how it works and then it can be released to the citizens.
Any questions? Motion.
We will move to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of five hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars, thirty-one cents.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, for Haley.
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
Treasure. Item thirteen and fourteen are both treasure-related items. Our esteemed Treasurer, Barb Buchenberger, is here to answer those questions. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. First item on the treasures list here is the internal control policy. I try to review it every year and review it with the Finance Committee, which we did. And they are recommending that we, that you approve the changes that are recommended. Enclosed with your packet is a Finance Committee report, which explains the changes.
For the public, what's the big change?
Mostly it has to do with two things. One is municipal court. They had some logistical issues that made it very difficult for them to actually adhere to the policy, rather than just continue to have them not meet the policy. We worked through some of the logistical issues, found ways to keep the protections that we need while making it easier for them to follow the policy. And so a lot of the wording changes has to do with municipal court. The other one is, we're just trying to make it a little more efficient. It sometimes becomes difficult for some of the things that need to be, that need to happen by having just Curran and myself, my deputy and myself, always having to be there, especially when it comes time to, you know, make change for departments and, and so forth. And we're, we'd like to add the administrative supervisor or admin support supervisor to have petty cash and throw change cash to help us out with that. The other, probably the other main change is the delivery time for the department deposits they come over. They used to come over by noon. We changed it to two. Now that's become difficult for the administrative support to get everything done by the end of the day, so that we are compromising on one.
Compromise is good.
Yep.
Questions?
I have one.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Barb, I see there's, there's one company on here that's still in business and has appeared on other delinquent.
This is, that's the next item.
That's the next one.
Oh, I am so sorry.
No problem.
You're right.
We're on thirteen.
I'll rewind now.
Okay. Anything on thirteen?
I didn't have thirteen in front of me.
It's white, no, no green cover.
It's out of order.
Yes, Administrator.
Just one comment on this. I think that very good due diligence has been made on the part of the Treasurer, Finance Director, and the Finance Committee. We reinstitute the Finance Committee three or four years ago to meet regularly. There had been a lapse in some of these things that hadn't been reviewed on a regular basis are now. So I think that that should give some confidence to the public that there's oversight taking place, that there's regular review taking place of these. So I think while that doesn't come across necessarily at the council meeting, there's a lot of discussion about these at the Finance Committee. It's about as interesting as watching paint dry. But, you know, the committee does a good job in really putting the staff through the paces on this. And these are really important items to be able to make sure that the financial security of the city is protected. So I think that's something to point out to the community that's been, I think, a good process and one that Barb certainly takes very seriously as her Finance Director, as do the committee members.
Anything else?
I'd concur with you.
Alderman Gail?
While the internal policy, internal control policy is definitely not leisurely reading. It's a necessary evil to review it regularly. And Barb does a great job of making sure it's updated for the current, current operations of the city. And I think overall, very, very good effort here on everyone's part.
If nothing else, motion on thirteen.
Gail, move to approve Resolution 11707-051716, reciting Resolution 11638-081815, and receding the internal control policy on cash handling and receding for the City of Oak Creek.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Now, item fourteen is a motion to authorize publication and write-off of the attached list of 2014 delinquent personal property tax per city policy.
Another annual review that we do. In front of you is a, a list of the write-off and publications. We tried to break it down, make it as easy to read as possible. There's a couple of things attached. Not only do you have that list, but there's a computer-generated report. And the reason I include that is so that you can verify the numbers that are on the list and know that we're only writing off what, what is there to write off. A portion of this is charged back to the other taxing jurisdictions, what we're allowed by law to do. Everything else would be written off and that's an auditor suggestion, recommendation. And just to answer a question before you ask it, we do continue to pursue collections. That doesn't mean that just because we write them off, we don't try to collect.
I tell you, you've been around for a while.
It gets asked every year.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Sorry about that before. Because I was, I was looking at that, that there's one company that's still in business that has appeared on this list multiple times. And is there not any licensing issues that this city can use to say, hey, or you're not getting your license because this is a constant problem or, or what?
None of the ones that are on this list have a license that we can hold. And they, we don't have business licenses. We do do that for businesses that, that require liquor licenses or health licenses.
Okay.
So you won't see any of those on that list.
All right, thank you.
Other than public embarrassment, that's about the only thing we can do, right?
Well, right. I mean, that, that's part of the publication.
Mm-hmm. Other questions? Motion.
McCavitch will make a motion to authorize publication and write-off of the attached list of 2014 delinquent personal property tax per city policy.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Sixteen?
Kerkowski will make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to Weather Pro Exteriors, 1815 South 108th Street, West Dallas, and to the seven following, seven salespersons listed on the agenda.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Sixteen?
Kerkowski will make a motion to grant an amusement operator and amusement devices license to the three businesses listed on the agenda.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
All right, nineteen is held till after the closed session. Twenty is a consideration of ordinance number 2806. It creates Section 2.80 of the municipal code to create a standing joint review board. Mr. Doug Seymour?
Not esteemed?
You're dynamic. I give you dynamic. Both good words.
That's good.
But no, you're not esteemed.
All right. I remember that. Thank you. Actually, on, on the heels of the discussion of the TIF district, when a community creates a TIF district, it is charged by state statute with convening a joint review board, which contains members of the taxing jurisdictions within the city. That would be the city, the county, the school district, Milwaukee area, Tegon College District, MMSD, although it's a taxing jurisdiction, it is not a member or that's of that special district of the joint review board. And the joint review board gets together and is convened to go over the project plan. It actually is the approving authority for the project plan for a TIF district. Now traditionally, and as has been the case in the City of Oak Creek, whenever there has been a new tax incremental financing district, we would convene the joint review board. And once their job is done in approving, reviewing, and improving the TIF district, then we would dissolve that joint review board until the need arose for the next one. Some changes that took place with state statutes over the past year requires communities that have active TIF districts to have a standing joint review board. And that means that we would not necessarily adjourn the, or dismiss the joint review board after they do their work in reviewing and potentially approving a TIF district. They would remain a standing committee. And part of the reason for that is there's new state requirements for annual review of all TIF districts by the joint review board on or about July 1st of every year. So rather than reconvening and trying to get another group together, it's, it does make sense and it's a state statute that a community that has any active TIF districts, they have that standing joint review board. And this ordinance creates that standing JRV.
Any questions? Motion.
Kerkowski, go ahead. If I could just make a quick comment.
City Administrator?
One of the other items that the, the state statutes have required is an annual report. We already do that report. The council gets that, that really makes sure that everybody, all the taxing districts can follow what's going on in the district. So that's also a new requirement in the state statutes, but it's one that we've been doing for some time. So that'll be a report that gets submitted to the JRV as well.
Just one more comment.
Alderman McCavitch?
Doug, this will fall on you. Describe who's typically on this board, because I was on the last review board for TIF 11. So if you want to go through the agencies that are represented.
Sure, absolutely. It is a member of the city, is a member of the school district, a member of the county, a member from MATC, and a citizen representative that's chosen by the remainder of the group at their first meeting.
Welcome. Any other questions? All right, did we get a motion on that? Okay, motion on that.
Kerkowski will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2806, creating Section 2.80 of the municipal code to create a standing joint review board. McCavitch will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
I'm sure if it's a board.
We're creating a board.
Yeah, you're not in yet.
Is he esteemed enough?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, on the vote. Yeah, sorry. Yes.
Aye.
Is that everybody's?
Guzekowski?
Aye, again.
Yeah, Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, item twenty-one is a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of Alderman Ken Gail to the standing joint review board. Questions?
I have a question. For the members of the board, is this a, is this a, I know it's a permanent board now, but does the membership, does it have a rolling membership or are the same people on it permanently?
From the city's, city's perspective, the city's representative, I believe, in, in the ordinance that was just passed is a one-year term to coincide with, certainly there's elections and changes to the, you know, the council president and the mayor's appointment. So you can have up to two years, but I think that the city's continuing use of a one-year term for the standing joint review board is appropriate.
And so the language is, it's subject confirmation with the Common Council, second meeting April for a term lasting two years, commencing on May 1st, but because of elections and other circumstances, they'll probably look at it every year. That satisfy you? Okay? Anything else?
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Alderman McCavitch.
I would encourage the mayor on his appointments to really look at where the TIFs are going to be created and put that Alderman, if it's going to be affected, whose district's going to be affected by the TIF.
Yeah, I, point taken. I just, I think Ken, with his professional experience, I think it's a significant addition to the group.
Don't disagree. Just a suggestion.
Yep, taken. All taken. All right, motion.
Kerkowski will make a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of Alderman Ken Gail to the standing joint review board.
Second.
Second by McCavitch. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
McCavitch?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
That might be the most unenthusiastic eye for yourself for a person.
Odd.
Wow. Let's fire up, you're not dynamic at all.
The motion didn't include esteemed.
I can't just hand those out like quickies. You did get one. All right. All right. All right, let's get back to business. All right. Item 22 is a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes, Section 19.851E, to consider a proposed tax incremental district number 12, finance development agreement buying between the City of Oak Creek and IKEA Property... Never heard of that company, Inc., in the 2nd District.
Gil, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes, Section 19.85 sub 1 sub E, to consider a proposed tax incremental district number 12, finance development agreement buying between the City of Oak Creek and IKEA Property, Inc., in the 2nd District.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?